How are you?
Wayne, how's it going?
How you doing Jill?
I'm good.
How are you?
How are you? Sorry.
I've lost hearing and...
Really? I don't know.
My hearing must...
I'm hearing on the door.
How's it going?
How you doing Jill?
It's just going like that.
Good. How are you? Sorry.
I've lost hearing and...
Really? I don't know.
My hearing must...
Are you?
Stress headache.
How's it going?
I'm doing well.
Really good.
How are you?
How are you?
How are you? Sorry.
This is just reading in my head. I've lost hearing and...
Really? I don't know.
My hearing must...
Are you?
I'm hearing on the door.
How's it going?
I'm doing well.
Really good. How are you?
How are you?
How are you?
Turn it off.
Okay.
It sucks if that's the best it's gonna be.
Holy cow!
Pretty bad. Hey Blair.
How we doing?
Doing good.
If it's turned off over there, will it not turn on over here? We're supposed to interact.
Who are you talking to?
For the classification. You can sit over here with us if you know.
Next sound.
There's no exit.
Yes.
I've got my dinner here with me. Go. How goes it?
Good. You?
Yes.
Oh, good. But you can't see over these blessed lines.
Yes.
Well, that's kind of interesting.
Yes, it was Susanna. She was not there. So do they go back to them?
Yes.
Worked perfectly when we tested it.
That's always the way it goes Lisa.
We got an answer.
Whatever you just did. Smoked him on my thing.
Well, yeah, I do have an answer.
They look like they're on now. Just give me to warm up.
These are babies to me.
Yeah, how are you?
Oh. All the lights came on. I just realized today.
Just waiting for input. So can we not hear the mics when we touch them? Were you scared that I couldn't fix it?
Yeah. Well, they don't make these.
No, they don't.
You're like, you're way too buff for this.
Okay, thank you.
But it's at least better.
Yeah.
It's really cute shirt.
Dress?
Yeah.
It is a dress. It's way cute. Ah, I remember.
Did you talk to the mayor about Friday?
No. No. Did you want to bring that up?
I don't know what to do about these kids. Do we want to let them know our secret? Or later in the meeting?
We can do it later in the meeting.
Oh, is this so we don't have to have anything out there? It's all up there in here?
Yeah, I don't really like them though. This is what we're gonna do Blair. When one day when we get here.
You know what you could do? We could make a little bracket and drop this bottom piece off.
But even still, I think I'm just gonna move it over your right hand here. Or I'll share.
We really could share. We would only just need one.
I said that, but because of these things, we had to get...
Of course they're there.
But they need to go.
I'd be happy to.
Here, what were you going to say to them?
It's not late. You're five minutes early.
I was just being...
I'm last, so I'm late.
Give them a minor recap and suggest that they... Our city council meeting on...
Oh, about the...
The mixed views. About the loss basically. And that... And then Rob called me afterwards and I told him that. And he's like, yeah, that's what I told him. I think I told you. I just don't know.
We have our own screen?
We don't know what to tell them to do.
What's it connected to? Just when they show something?
I guess so.
It's the same screen.
If you go listen to that meeting, we'll...
Yeah, it was going to be back there.
But we don't have to and so it's...
I'm just tempted to be like...
It's lower than...
Yeah. But I just don't... I mean, it's a pretty obvious side to come and listen to this. That we don't like the parking. We don't like this. We don't like that. So that's all I was gonna say.
Back to, okay. And I had a citizen who had an idea. And I think that falls into your committee possibly.
Alright.
Something's changing.
They want, um, now they're all wanting to do like a... Satisfaction with... What am I trying to say? Like a customer service survey? Like how was your experience?
There's this one.
Oh, so when they have any interaction?
With the city?
Is it? So can I put it back? I use your pen?
I'm a little worried about that.
No pressure Mac. You only have three minutes.
Other person, yes. I feel like it was just a...
I'm just teasing you.
You wanna give that to her?
Yeah, just talk to us. That's what I said. I said, well, you could always just talk to us. But it's a tool that you can use.
Hey Angie. In today.
I will talk with...
Todd. You know.
Does she come in?
Yeah. Yeah, you need to.
Aren't you so glad you called that?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Yes. Thanks for giving me his number. I'm glad you had it.
Yeah.
Entities get surveys.
Well, I asked him for one and he didn't... Give me so...
On like, program, um, programs and all of that. I just get some questions. So, so somebody else can help us.
I wish it.
Do you remember?
But I'm not sure.
No.
But, if you wanna, let me know your thoughts there. I'm not committed to it.
That's good. Thank you.
You bet.
Thought that was your new pretty truck out there. You hear me huh? Howdy.
I made some corrections to...
Our charter?
Yeah.
Oh. You can't help yourself.
I would ask you to sit down if that was the case.
Did I forget a period or something?
I'm in Montana.
Oh, you know, no, I'll tell you what happened there. It's my... My word was not cooperating. You know how it thinks it knows what you want and it won't? And finally, I just gave up and said, screw it. I don't care. And I said that.
That's all I mean.
It's your email. Was that something I needed to look at before our meeting? Okay.
Good enough. Thanks Paul.
Oh.
How are you doing?
You're okay with the option too? Like a...
It's two with some adjustments.
Okay.
Oh. He is. Might be getting recorded. You never know.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of things.
So they're trying to get this up?
We're working on some technical difficulties. We have a new sound system and video system. And so if you bear with us for just a minute, see if we can get our monitors up and running. We'll start in just a minute. Wow. That felt so loud.
Wow, it seems awfully quiet in here.
Haley. Haley. It worked.
What?
It worked.
Was I in on what? Was it, oh? No, I don't even go over there. It would be great if you want to get it to one of us. Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. And you don't have to email it. You can just give it...
I'm in M's. You can give it to...
Oh, Quinn's got scissors.
This wasn't near as scary as the last night.
After your comment, you can hand it. Okay? Thank you.
Your face still makes me laugh.
It was like surprise, disgust, and compute.
I was disgusted.
All in one. It was awesome.
Alright, let's get her done. Nice. I... I don't know that I like that.
Oh, I gotta wait.
Guys, I can be back right here. I can...
I don't know what you're saying to me. Oh, I can't see that.
It looks like it's about... Hundred fifty degrees rather than ninety when we had before.
Though our cameras aren't in yet.
But we've got a lot better angle right now.
That's good.
So it's panoramic view. That's what you're saying. That's nice.
It's not what normally you got from city council.
Sweet. As long as it doesn't do close ups, I'm fine. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I agree with you.
Jeez. Now I'm scared.
It's good for some things and not for others.
That's why, yeah. Like I'm a...
It has a big screen, huh?
Did someone say the P word? Whoa. Those are spooky.
Not enough to win. Because people then start to get to know people and more. If you skip that...
Yeah.
Most add for the people who didn't do it. Oh, no.
Yeah.
But like if you go to state convention, what's fifteen people? You have to whittle down. I think we had to get going. They don't get more than that and you cancel that. But you're voting, voting, voting there. It's great. Because nobody's getting on the talking table. Yeah, for city elections and stuff like that.
That's good. That's a good perspective. I think it's the audio we're having problems with. Is our screen there? Our audio? Yes.
Can they hear?
Can they hear us?
I... I don't know if we're live or not.
If it's just the screens, then yeah, we can get started.
Yourself there?
Turn it on and listen.
Turn up.
Are we... Are we live yet, Mark? Yes, Lisa?
Yes, we're live.
So you can, and the audio sounds like it's working too.
The audio does sound like it's working, so maybe we should just get started.
It was in mine, so I put it over there.
They totally did.
Okay.
Didn't bother me actually.
Alright. We'd like to welcome everybody this evening to our council meeting of October thirteenth. It's oh four PM. And all council members are in attendance. Welcome our youth city council here. It's great. Smiling faces or not? Well, I guess they're smiling. They might be. Just a note, Dave Larson was supposed to be out of town this week camping. And instead, he's home suffering from shingles and trying to find a comfortable position. So keep him in your thoughts and we're sorry, Dave. He couldn't make it on your campy trip this week and we miss you. So we will begin with a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Windsor and then I will give the prayer.
Please stand.
Read after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet here tonight as a city. We're grateful to represent this great city of South Weaver and for the opportunity to serve the good people that live here. We pray that our spirit may be with us, that we may make good decisions for our cities and right decisions. We are so grateful for all those who serve to keep us safe and protected. Fire, police, armed forces, and pray that thou will watch over and protect them. Also bless our health officials and as we move forward to try to solve this pandemic, they might be successful in their research. We're so grateful for all of our blessings, Father, and pray thy attendance this evening. In thy son's name, Jesus Christ, amen. Alright. Okay, first of all, I want to give you a Corona update. Cases are up in Davis County forty percent this last week. The week before, they were up thirty-four percent the week before. So they are climbing quickly. There's a total of seven hundred and sixty-two cases right now. And Davis County Health Director says they feel like they're maxed out. They may have to give up contact tracing to meet the immediate needs, the more vital needs of the communities. Currently, there are fourteen cases hospitalized. Hospitals are sixty-four percent capacity statewide. Hospitalization lags behind a couple of weeks and so we won't see the spike, the effect of the spike in the hospitals for another couple of weeks. But they anticipate a surge in that and those as well. And the interesting statistic this week is that half of the cases in hospital are not high-risk patients right now. And that is a statewide trend. Unknown contacts are increasing. And that includes school district cases. And so that might be part of the reason. The transmission rate for the state is one point two seven. We like to be at one or less. And so we're above what we would like to be. South Weaver City has nineteen active cases. There were twenty active cases last week. We have a total of one hundred cases in South Weaver now. The governor came out with a press release today. The state is emphasizing personal responsibility. Please keep your distance, wear masks in public, and limit gatherings. They're not doing anymore of the color-coded guidelines. Instead, the counties are categorized as high, moderate, or low transmission rate. And based, these rates are based on case rates, three things. Case rates, percent positivity, positivity, and statewide ICU utilization. So a public health order will be issued on this Thursday and it will extend for two weeks to October twenty-ninth. The restrictions are based on scientific evidence and transmission levels. Davis County is going to be classified, and they are classified as moderate right now. And the thing they talked about that we haven't heard much about before is casual social gatherings. Casual social gatherings are different than public gatherings because they consist of family and friends. They, and in our moderate level for the next two weeks, the casual social gatherings that we have should be ten or fewer people unless masks are worn. So state officials are equating this to a power surge. It needs a circuit breaker to stop the damage. And so this is their response to that. And there'll be more information on the state website and also listen for the health order on this Thursday. So that was a mouthful. And I didn't give all the information. There's a lot more that you can look up and listen to the governor's words today if you would like to know more. Alright, so item number four, we'll go to public comment. Please come to the pulpit, keep your, state your name and address. What was it? Pole, podium, pulpit. Okay. Three minutes or less, if you would, your remarks and also direct your comments to the full council. And know that we will not respond at this time. We're now open for public comment.
New mic, better. Paul Sturm, twenty-five, twenty-seven, Deer Run Drive. I have several comments regarding the packet for this thirteen October twenty city council meeting as follows. Regarding agenda item number five, the presentation on ranked choice voting. A, how does the process work in a case where there are five or more candidates for three positions? How do abstentions from voting, how are abstentions for voting considered? I.e., someone only wants to vote for one candidate? Get some outliers from the explanation. Regarding agenda item number eight. The request by Mosquito Abatement District Davis, M A D D dash D, for funds. The charge for mad services should be based on the size of the area of the city. That is, the area serviced by the mosquito abatement district. For example, South Weaver has an area of four point six seven miles, whereas Leighton City has twenty-two point six five square miles, a factor of four point eight five times larger. I was also unable to find any reference to the area of unincorporated Davis County for comparison. It is surely much larger than South Weaver City and may even be larger than any Davis County city and requires significantly more treatments due to the wet marshy environment. Although the funds requested one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars do not appear to be that much in the larger scheme of things, fair is fair. Number three, and please, youth council, don't take this incorrectly. The youth city council charter document was very thorough and well-presented, but there are missing and inaccurate Roman numerals for paragraph headings. There are inconsistent fonts throughout the document, especially in the paragraph headings. And see, I would be willing to assess in reworking the document so the youth city council has a clean document that would better represent their significant efforts and support to South Weaver City and a document for which the youth city council would be proud. Thank you.
Thanks Paul. Thanks Paul.
Okay, is there any further public comment? And hearing none, we will move to our presentation. I just wanted to ask the council, first of all, if it would be okay if we moved item agenda, agenda item number eleven, the youth city council charter to item number seven after the approval of the consent agenda? Or is the council okay to move that one up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we have Cory Holdaway with us here tonight. Ranked choice voting is a voting method for municipal elections that has voters rank their candidate versus first, second, third, and so on. A few cities have begun using this method for deciding their elections. Okay, and I will turn the time over now to Cory.
Thank you, Mayor. And... As was shared, my name is Cory Holdaway. I'm a member of the board for a five oh one C three organization. Utah ranked choice voting. We're a group of citizens that have organized around this issue. And if I could just take a minute and give you a little history of ranked choice voting, if that would be appropriate. I don't want to take a lot of time, but I do think it's relevant. In two thousand and eighteen, well, let me go back even further. I served in the legislature for a time. And when we were in the legislature, the Republican Party used ranked choice voting during a convention back in the early two thousands. That was my first exposure to instant runoff voting or ranked choice voting. And I thought at the time, this is a great idea and for a number of different reasons, which we'll get into in the presentations. And then in two thousand and eighteen, there was a, two representatives, Representative Roberts and Representative Rebecca Chavez-Hauk. They couldn't be more polar opposites in terms of political ideology. One on the very far right, Representative Roberts, and one on the very far left, Representative Chavez-Hauk. They teamed up and they passed what, House Bill thirty-five in the two thousand and eighteen session. And that bill basically... Representatives, Representative Roberts and Representative...
Try to just ignore that.
I'm thinking about ghosts. They passed into, again, in two thousand and eighteen, House Bill thirty-five, which the legislature wanted to empower cities to be able to use ranked choice voting on a pilot program. In two thousand and eighteen, at that time, Utah ranked choice voting wasn't in place. But there were some of us that were promoting that across the state. A couple of cities took that up for the two thousand and nineteen session. You can see the principles in terms of the Utah ranked choice voting. These are the people that are promoting it now. I don't know if you probably, I don't know if you can see on the screen. Stan Lockard is a former Republican Party Chair. Myself, a former Republican Party, or Republican legislator. Taylor Morgan and David May. They're two young people that, well, I should say younger than Stan or I, that are also helping us with this. If we go to the next slide. Are we able to do that? There we go. So this is an illustration of what we're talking about when we're talking about ranked choice voting. If you had three people running for one office, typically what cities are forced to do is they're forced to have a primary election in order to sift the number of candidates down to two. Using ranked choice voting, that requirement to have a primary is eliminated because you're basically ranking all of those that declare for candidacy in a given race. If on the first pass or in the ballot, on the first go-round, if somebody receives fifty percent in that count, the election's over. And the object of ranked choice voting is getting to a majority rather than a plurality, which is less than fifty percent. I think we would, well, at least some of us are concerned when we are electing folks with significantly less than fifty percent, as was the case in the recently completed primary election, which is a partisan election, not related to city government, but it illustrates the point. This past spring, we had a gubernatorial race that had four primary candidates, Wright, Cox, Hughes, and Huntsman. The four of those split the votes among each one of them. Wright came in at eleven percent. Hughes came in at around twenty percent. Huntsman and Cox came in, Huntsman came in at about thirty-five percent, I think, if I remember right. And Cox won with thirty-six percent. This is a concern for a number of different reasons. And one has to do with, number one, primary elections typically don't generate the same amount of interest as a general election. Generally, in a primary election, you've only got, well, you've got fewer number of people selecting who's going to be moving on. In this case, we had thirty-six percent, which was about half of the registered Republicans that were eligible to vote. So seven, when you take that out and you're looking at seventeen percent of the electorate, selecting largely who our next governor's going to be. And when I think about that, I think that's not really what our founders had in mind in terms of representative democracy. So that's just an illustration of the challenges that we're dealing with. So going back to my illustration here, fifty percent. Fifty percent is reached on the first go-round, the election's over. You've got a winner. However, if the three people... However, if the three people, none of them reach 50%, then the bottom person or the person receiving the fewest number of votes is dropped from the, dropped from the count. And their second choice then comes into play and they're redistributed, the votes are redistributed accordingly. And then ultimately, in this case, because you'd have only three running, you would end up with obviously greater than 50%. So the, the whole notion, let's go to the next slide if we could. This illustrates in graph kind of what I was just talking about. Let's go to the next slide. People ask, why are, why are people so engaged in wanting to see ranked choice voting move forward? There's a number of different reasons. Number one is there's a taxpayer, taxpayer savings. And also a savings to those candidates that are running for office. A candidate would only be required to run one campaign rather than a primary campaign and a general election campaign if they're successful moving out of a primary. Taxpayer savings would be the city or would only be running one general election rather than two. So you're reducing your election costs by half in having to run both a primary election and a general election. The election season or the campaign season is, is compressed as well. Rather than having a campaign season that starts in the spring and goes all the way until the fall. The, the legislature has allowed those cities that are interested in doing ranked choice voting to have their filing deadline for candidacy in August. Candidates declare and then from there, the campaign starts or the campaign season starts. So you've got a compressed amount of time. It's ready for cities to implement. This is a point in terms of equipment. The state, in their wisdom, a few years ago contracted with, they put out a bid for election equipment. ESNS, which is the equipment that they chose, has the capability to run a ranked choice voting election. Go to the next slide if we could please. Thank you, Lisa. Also voters, we feel like have a more, more of an opportunity to express their will. Rather than, in some cases, I know for myself, sometimes I've wanted to vote for somebody, but I haven't voted for that person because I knew that that person probably wasn't going to win. And so I chose somebody else that I was more than likely. So it's kind of a second choice that, that I've made. Using ranked choice voting, you can vote your number one. If that number one stays at one, they're in play. And if not, then the person is dropped off and the votes are redistributed. I've already talked about the winner by majority. And then also this eliminates the spoiler effect in terms of long shock candidates not drawing votes away. In one election I ran as a legislator, I had 3% of the American Independent Party pull off many of the Republican votes in my district. I ended up winning that election with less than 50% plurality. But had, had we had ranked choice voting, I would have, they would have, those people that selected them would have that American Independent Party that could have expressed their will and then also had a voice in terms of who the ultimate representative was going to be. Let's go to the next slide. So two cities in 2019 took it up. And I'll tell you the reason why we only had two cities. And this may lend itself to some discussion with you. County clerks across the state have said this, we don't want to do this. County clerks are the ones that by and large administer the elections for our cities. It's not a requirement. They've done it more out of convenience and just to consolidate. In the issue of ranked choice, but well, I'm going to go first to vote by mail. When vote by mail first came out, every county clerk opposed vote by mail except for once, one county clerk. That county clerk happened to be Salt Lake County and, and she said, I'll try it. She tried it. It was successful in Salt Lake County and ultimately we've seen the, the strength of vote by mail across the state. And ultimately, the county clerks that opposed vote by mail have now come along and said, this is good. It involves more people. It's more representative of the, the people. We feel like ranked choice voting is in that same sort of vein in terms of we've got one county clerk in the state, in this case, it's Utah County, who has said, we think ranked choice voting is a great idea. We'll run it. We had two cities in Vineyard. We had another one at the last minute decided not to run. Lehigh City was going to do it as well, but at the last minute decided to pull out. But Payson and Vineyard ran it. And I want you to look at the results of their citizenry in terms of, of a survey that was done. Let's go to the next slide. Voters, voters liked it. 86% of the voters, we surveyed those people in those two cities that voted and 86% of them found that they liked ranked choice voting. 82 said that they'd liked, 82% said that they wanted to see this in future elections. Next slide. The, the candidates also thought it was a good thing. 75% of the candidates, even those that weren't successful, thought it was a better process. And it was better because it, it ranked choice voting lends itself to a more issue-based campaign rather than personality and attacking personalities. You're forced, you're not forced to, but, but you're more likely to talk about your issues rather than attacking maybe somebody that happens to be running and, and trying to elevate yourself. You don't want to attack anybody necessarily on personality because their number one choice may ultimately be your second choi-, or the second choice. You may become their second choice. So you're more talking about what your ideas are in campaigns. It's been shown in other areas of the country where it's been a little more widely tried. Let's go to the next slide. This past legislative session, the, the legislature passed a resolution commending Payson and Vineyard. In fact, it was overwhelmingly passed. It was simply, it was a resolution. But the legislature really wants to see this issue go forward. In addition to that, the, well, the legislature passed it, the governor signed it. This past spring, we had both the Republicans and the Democrats in their county first state conventions using ranked choice voting. That's in a partisan election, different than, than what we're talking about here. But it illustrates the point that ranked choice voting is becoming more and more something that people are interested in. Let's go to the next slide. I think it's the last. So next steps, if a city is interested in doing ranked choice voting, there's a couple of things that need to take place. Before April 15th, you need to make a declaration to the elections office, Lieutenant Governor's Office, that, that your city is interested in doing this for the 2021 election. So that would be next spring, obviously. I will, I, I'm going to go out on a limb here and, and at least lay the layout on the table, what you will probably face if, if South Weaver wanted to do this. I think you're, you're, well, I know the Davis County clerk is not interested in running a ranked choice voting election. In fact, of the clerks in the state, he's probably the most adamant that he doesn't like it for whatever reason. We think it's a matter of, of, they know what they've got. They like what they've got. They don't want to change it. And, and so with that said, if you were to use ranked choice voting, the requirement would be for you to, to have someone else run your election or you do it independently of, of the clerk's office, which isn't unheard of. I mean, for years, cities were doing that on their own. To assist with that, we have contracted with the former elections director for the, the state. When Governor Walker, well, actually Governor Levitt and Governor Walker were governors. Her name is Kellene Potter. She happens to also be the mayor of Heber. She was the elections director. She has agreed to, to coordinate any cities that want to do this with using the same equipment. We would lease the equipment from the state vendor ESNS. And then you would run your elections independent from your, your county clerk. With that, I suspect you probably, or you may have some questions. I would be honored to be able to try and answer those questions. And again, this is more informational for you. And I mean, we would like to see it move forward, but ultimately, obviously the decision is yours. So.
All right, thank you, Cory. Are there questions or comments for Cory?
I've got a few. So Cory, just what's your benefit out of this?
Great question. In 2018, there was an organization called Fair Votes that contracted with Stan and I specifically. I'm, in fact, I'm a contract lobbyist. I left the legislature to do lobbying. And so Fair Votes, which is a national organization that is promoting this across the country, contracted with Stan and I to, to move this agenda. We both like this idea and so we accepted the, the contract. We didn't necessarily want Fair Votes to have the, the power that they did on a national level. We wanted more local control. Thus, we created the C3 organization so that we could raise funds within the state and from, independently from Fair Votes. So I'm paid through Utah ranked choice voting. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have quite a few, sorry, but I don't want to monopolize it all. I've experienced it. I was part of the the conventions past year.
Okay.
And I think there's places definitely where it is very beneficial. And I think there's places where it's not so beneficial. And you've probably heard all these, but I'll state them so that other people can hear another point of view.
Sure.
In the convention, there were 12 individuals that had to be whittled down to, you know, two that were going forward. And that was very helpful there, rather than have to have an election and a revote and a revote, which we did the year or the, the time prior. So that made it very effective because between votes, you weren't hearing from everybody. There were no changes. The place that I think it doesn't necessarily benefit the public is getting rid of the primary vote. Because if you go back and look at all of the primary results, the top vote getter of the primary isn't always the one that wins the election. And so you have people that spend a lot of time and effort to study candidates and go vote on the primary. And then on the general election, you may not have as educated electorate. And so sometimes, or sometimes you find out more about a candidate. And so therefore your vote changes from what was in the primary.
Or the one that didn't finish as high is a little more motivated to work harder.
Yeah, there's a lot of different reasons. And so I think there's something lost by getting rid of primaries in certain situations. My final comment would just say, I think you're with the recent gubernatorial race. Yes, it was 34% to 36%, but that was because of another thing that filed up the system that had been in Utah for a long where we had always only have one coming out of the convention. And now you have the get on the ballot by signature
Right.
method. And if we didn't have that, we wouldn't have had that situation. So the ranked choice voting has some benefits. But I, I, I wouldn't have wanted to apply it to the, the recent governor primary because, for example, Mr. Huntsman barely got 9% in the
Primary or in the convention.
In the convention from an electorate that got to know him and all the other candidates. And yet he jumped clear up to almost winning
Yeah.
with the general public that didn't get to know him like the other. I think there's that potential risk if you get rid of primaries. Those are my thoughts.
If, if I could just respond, Mayor. Everything that you said is absolutely correct. I would just push back a little bit in terms of, at the end of the day, we hope that whoever is selected has the broadest amount of support.
I agree.
And so that's part of what the benefit is of RCV or ranked choice voting. At the end of the day, whoever is, moves forward with greater than 50% is going to have a broader amount of support across the electorate than, than without ranked choice voting. And then the other point that I was, there was another point that I was going to make, but it, it evaporated. So I'll, I'll just stop there.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll chime in. This is more for the, the council. I'm sure we'll get a different spin on it. But there's two things that have to happen for ranked choice voting to work in South Weaver. And I'm speaking specifically to this community. There's two things that weren't pointed out. For ranked choice voting to work, you only, the voter has to have one vote for that position. And that position has to have more than two candidates running for that position than ranked choice vote is working. South Weaver doesn't work that way. South Weaver gets multiple votes for the number of positions that are open to get it down. So we do have a form of ranked choice voting. And we cut the people down or the candidates down to no more than two per position. So on those two conditions, I don't think it's really going to work for us because I think the system we have already does what we're looking for. We don't have districts. I don't think we want to go to have districts for council members. We each represent the city as a city. And we are a small enough city that I don't think we want to change that, that perspective. So I appreciate the presentation, but I don't, the shoe fits, I don't think the shoe works for every city. We're small enough that I think we have a system that works great for us.
Payson has that same system. Payson has all of their city council. And, and ranked choice voting works in the same sort of way. In terms of once a candidate hits 50%, they're pulled off, they're the, the elected. And then you cycle through until the next candidate hits 50%. So it's just the reverse of, of dropping off as well, which is what Payson, I think, liked.
Well, we have three votes for when three council seats open, people can vote one, two. It still works for us. You don't have to have 50%. You can have 90% or you can have 30%, but it still works for us.
Sure. Sure. Are you done? Don't mean to start.
Do you want me to be done?
No, no, no.
Wait, did you have anything more?
No.
And I guess I'm coming from a cost perspective. You said it. Take the governor's race, whether that's a good one to apply to or not. There's five candidates. No one gets 50%. You drop the low guy out. You have another election again, basically. No, no, there's not another election. Well, there's On the ballot, on the ballot, you have, the ballot is set up so that you have all of the candidates listed. And then the, then you have first choice, second choice, third choice. And then it's just a matter of the, the computer or the election equipment sorting it so that you get to, if nobody hits 50%, they drop it, they pick up the number twos from those that they dropped and they just resort it. So there's not an extra, there's not an extra ballot. There's not an extra election. I mean, it's just one election. The electorate marks their ballot. Yeah, okay.
Well, the problem I have with that, Blair, is that the person whose number one choice gets eliminated, they get a second vote.
Exactly. And that's Say that again, I'm sorry. But that's maybe not where you wanted your vote going.
Yeah. What I've said is the person's first vote, if they're the one who's eliminated, they're the last place. They get a vote again with their second place.
Oh, it's not a vote again.
No, you're not listening to me.
I am.
They have three votes. Their first vote didn't count. So now their second vote counts. My second vote for my number one guy doesn't count.
It still counts because they were, they're resorting it. They're just resorting it with
They're resorting the one that dropped out.
No, no, they're resorting all of them.
All the voters' number two votes got to get counted.
No, not number twos. Don't be, don't be confused. Don't make it harder than it is.
No, don't lecture to me.
I'm, I'm not. I'm just trying to educate you.
No, you're not. You're trying to confuse the system. You basically said everyone votes, their first place vote.
Mr. Windsor, you can argue with me. Okay, you can argue with
And I can argue with you if you keep interrupting me. I will. We're just going to agree to disagree because you're not listening to me and We're just going to agree to disagree because you're not listening to me and I don't want to listen to you anymore.
Okay, fine. I'm sorry. I'm sorry you feel that way. You answered my question. Thank you.
I just have one question, Mayor, which would just be as far as logistics. If this is something the city chose to do and we decide to contract, how long would our contract be?
It would be for that one election.
Just one year.
Yeah, so it'd be for that election. And we think what's going to happen, we've got a number of cities that are interested in this across the state now. A number in Salt Lake County, quite some additional ones in Utah County because we've got a willing clerk. So we think it's going to ultimately end up in a sort of similar sort of fashion as the vote by mail issue did.
Thank you.
I I just want to hear like how it would play out. So so for our 2021 election. Position has five people running.
Great.
Tell me how it would work out.
Thank you for the question. So in the mayor's race, it would, well, and it sounds like you don't have districts.
No.
So in each of the districts, I I'm assuming someone has to file, is it just for city council or is it for?
For mayor and for then for city council.
Okay. And at large city council. Okay, so let's talk about the mayor first. I think the the illustration on the the slide illustrates that pretty clearly. Where it starts to become, however, the the use of the ballot and sorting that equipment or sorting that vote. So if nobody hits 30% or 50% in the first ballot, then the computer would sort it again and everybody's vote counts. To to Mr. Windsor's point, everybody's vote counts on that second tranche. And then you get to whatever the percentage happens to be. The only difference is, is those that chose the one that came in last, their choice changes and is moved into one of the other areas. So you're saying their second choice moves up to their first choice? Yes. 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 Okay. Is that what you were trying to say? Is that your point?
That's what I did say.
Oh, I I'm sorry if I I offended you. It wasn't intended. But again, my point was being that your, those that didn't choose the lowest voter, those votes are still in play. They still count. They're the same. So it's it's not like their their votes stopped counting. So that that would be the only argument I would make with you.
And obviously, you didn't hear what I said, and it's not going to work till you try to explain it to us. So.
Okay. Oh, well, and obviously, it's not something you're interested in. So I, you know.
So I have a question, Corey. Did you have anything else? Just about the equipment. Is it the same equipment?
Yes. Yes, it would be the ESNS state approved equipment that that we would be using. So and the costs, the costs for that, some cities have asked what the cost would be. We think we can do it for at the same, or there may be a little bit additional cost because of the fewer number of of cities. But the cost that you would save in having to run a primary election would 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 more than make up for the, instead of $250 per vote, it being $3. So if you had a primary election, ultimately, the cost would be $5 because you've got two elections.
And that was my questions that you just answered. So. All right.
All right.
Are there any other questions? No, thank you, Corey.
Well, thank you so much. I I do appreciate the interaction and Councilman Windsor, I hope I didn't offend you too bad. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
I I apologize for the problems we're having on technical. If I could have three minutes, I need to unplug a cable and plug it back in if you want to monitor. We can go on with the next.
How does the council feel? Do you want to take three minutes to try to get the monitors running?
I don't need the monitor.
I guess they don't need them tonight. We'll we'll just do it after. All right. Okay, next, we move to our action items. That begins with approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of September 15th, 2020. Are there comments or questions on these minutes? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of September 15th, 2020.
You have a second? Hey, any further comments? And we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 And motion carries. Thank you. All right, as we we stated at the beginning, we're going to move item number 11 to our next item, which is the youth city council charter and advisors.
Mayor, can I make a comment really quick before we do this?
You certainly may.
Um, I just wanted to address our public comment regarding the charter. I appreciate your comments regarding that. But I would also appreciate you to do a little bit more research when you're chastising punctuation and fonts. And I apologize if there are some that offended you. The youth city council worked really hard on this. And ultimately, it lies on the advisors, which would be Haley and myself. And I take full responsibility. It had nothing to do with our awesome youth. So I appreciate you commenting, but please make sure you do some research before you criticize those who are not at fault. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Petty. All right, the youth city council met recently, prepared their annual charter and are ready to present it to the city council for review and adoption. Along with the annual charter, the city council will also appoint advisors to work with the youth city council. This year, council members Alberts and Petty and McKenna Windsor are prepared to advise the YCC. So and I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we had, we met on the second of October. We have nine youth city council that had been sworn in on the previous meeting. And we sat down and talked about different goals that we have for the year. We ratified our charter, which needs to be adopted every year. So per the charter, we had an election. Emily Poff was elected our mayor for this year for 2020, 2021. So with that, we would love for her to just come up and present the charter to the council. You don't have to read it all. Just come on up and then ask if the council has any questions on it and it just needs to be accepted. And the advisors approved.
All right. Emily.
All right, so just tell what we changed.
You can just let them know a summary of it, how often we're meeting, what our goals are. Haley, do you have any thoughts on this?
Just the highlights. And then we did ask them to just kind of introduce.
All right. Well, my name's Emily Poff and I'm the mayor this year. And so some of the changes we made, they weren't very big changes. We changed the co-mayor to mayor pro tem. And that's Riker Alvey this year. And we added a secretary to and we changed, or we made the attendance more lenient this year because of COVID. And that's about it, right? All right, any questions about the charter?
Anyone have any questions?
I would just like to comment that we've had one meeting and it was fantastic. We have a fantastic group for our youth city council and we're really excited about what we have going this year. So thank you so much, Emily.
Yep.
Will you quickly tell them what you want to, I'm putting her on the spot, what you hope to get out of the youth city council this year?
Um, this year, I think I'd like to still be able to be active with the city even through COVID and stuff and still do, try and plan to save activities for the city, like breakfast with Santa and the Easter egg hunt, et cetera. And I think if we can just keep the city happy and healthy, that's my main goal.
Very good.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Mayor Poff. Appreciate your service.
And thanks for being willing to do it, all of you.
Yes, thank you. Could we have them stand and and just say their name and know what they're doing? Is that all right?
Let's see, Riker, you want to come up? No, go ahead.
So I'm Riker. And I'm the mayor pro tem. I don't know why they chose me, though. I so yeah, that's
Because he's a great candidate.
Still hope to accomplish an YCC, right?
I just want to be involved. That's I was been here for like two years now. So I just wanted to do my third year. I plan on doing it next year, too. I just like being involved. It's pretty fun.
Thank you.
Thanks, Riker.
Well, and Riker, we have received communication from you on issues in the with the council and and so you you are. I think that's awesome. We need Let's see, who wants to go next?
Lexi.
Hi, I'm Lexi. Um, I don't have any really important job, really.
Being a council member is important.
That it is.
Just ask your mom.
I joined because I wanted to curriculum. And I thought it would be like super fun and wanted to see what it's like. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks for serving. What else have we got?
We have McKenna.
Oh, McKenna, yeah.
I'm McKenna Windsor. I have been a part of the youth city council for, this will be my sixth year. I did it for three years in high school and this will be my third year as an advisor. We have accomplished a lot the last few years when I was on the council. I've enjoyed doing the Easter egg hunt, doing all the activities for the city. And I've just really enjoyed doing all the service that we do for this community. And before, when I was in high school, I didn't really care about politics. It was just eh. And then, once I got out of high school, I became more mature and watched more of our, of the meetings like I watched last week's. And why was that was long, but it was still good. But I am a very politic family, so.
Yes, we know.
Not just not in the military. He's very political. Every dinner we have, we talk.
Thank you, McKenna.
And then looks like Susanna.
Susanna.
Oh.
I'm Susanna Johnson. Yeah.
Do you have anything you're looking forward to, Susanna, this year?
I just like want to have fun this year and be able to like be involved with more things and just yeah, looking forward to it. It's awesome.
That's awesome. Thanks for serving. Okay, is that everyone?
I just want the council to note one item when we well, on the application, rather, we indicated we would meet once a month, but the youth city council wants to meet twice a month, and that allows us to do twice as. And we are so excited for their enthusiasm and we have, if I may say, we
Go for it.
We are going to work with Kent and Diana Hyer with Hyer Road. And they're going to help us do some awesome leadership activities and team building and service opportunities. And it's going to be a fantastic year. So.
That's awesome. That's great. All right, thank you. And I'm so excited for this youth city council. And please feel free to come and talk to any of the council members, the mayor. Ask us any questions or talk to us about concerns. We're just excited to have you as part of the team and and welcome you all. And we're grateful for your advisors, all three of them. And appreciate your service to the city. It's awesome.
So Mayor, if I can, can we have, I don't know if we need direction or if we have to make a motion up to the charter?
I believe we do. Is that correct? Yeah. Yes. And so do I have someone who will make a motion to? Mayor, I make a motion to accept the youth city council's charter and the advisors for the 2020, 2021 year. Great. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It's official. Congratulations. And thanks for coming. And we put you all at the, well, sort of the beginning. I guess it's been an hour, but in case you had other places you needed to go, or you're welcome to stay and and watch the rest of the show. All right. All right, we will move to item number seven, which is Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act or CARES Act Fire Department Pay. On September 2nd, 2020, the State Treasury Department updated its coronavirus relief fund guidance. In particular, this document calls out hazard pay for essential workers as an eligible use of CARES Act funds. Because of COVID-19, hazard pay has taken on a new meaning and is being considered for hazardous. Most fire departments across the state have opted to pay their frontline fire EMS employees hazard pay in addition to the regularly hour wage, regular hour wage. Our fire employees have asked that South Weaver City consider doing the same. Hazard pay would apply retroactively back to March 1st, 2020 and apply forward through November 30th, 2020. Most boards and city councils have approved hazard pay in the range of $2 to $4 per hour. The cost of hazard pay would be covered by CARES Act funds already received by South Weaver City. Staff is asking the city council to consider hazardous pay for fire employees in the range of $2 to $4 per hour for the period of March 1st through November 30th. The estimated costs from $2 to $4 per hour were included in your packet. Staff recommends $2 per hour dispersed in two payments. The first payment, well, the staff, I should say, the committee, the safety committee met and recommends $2 per hour dispersed in two payments. The first payment will be for hours worked March 2nd through September 27th. The second payment will be for hours worked September 28th through November 22nd. Are there comments or questions?
I have one.
Okay.
So I'd send an email out today as I was, I'd been reviewing this over the weekend, but I sent an email out this morning just to see where we are year to date. I know in our, as far as what we've received, what's been allocated and what's been spent for our CARES Act funding. I know in our minutes, if we, if in your packet on page 18, it does show as of September 15th where we were at. But I'd love to know if we have an updated amount.
Yes, we have an updated amount. And I apologize if your monitors were working. It's on the screen and we prepared to show it to you on that. Actual expenditures to date is 8,846. We, if we've allocated with the allocations that we've done so far for the upgrade here at City Hall, customer assistance, touchless features, two fire department journeys, the chest compression system and the proposed allocation of the fire payroll at 360,000. That takes us to a total of 575,846, which means we have, if we get all three tranches, we have not alloc, we still have to allocate and and use 91,933, roughly $92,000 of the total amount that we're expecting to get from the state has not been allocated to any specific purpose as of yet. So that's kind of where we are. We're at allocations and actual expenditures. We're looking 575,846 out of 667, 779, roughly $92,000. That could cover the hazard pay.
When do we expect our third payment?
Uh, that is still being negotiated at the state. The Utah League of Cities and Towns is involved in working with the state and how that will be done. And so we haven't been given a specific date yet on that one.
Okay. Next question, sorry, versus the council. So we have some of these allocated and I'm just going to review my notes here, like for the touchless fixtures. I wanted to verify what we were getting, making sure we were addressing all of the city employees that were going to benefit from getting these touchless fixtures. And when does this have to, when do we have to have the CARES Act money spent by before it has to? And when does this have to, when do we have to have the CARES Act money spent by before it has to be returned?
By November 30th, it has to be allocated. It doesn't have to actually be spent, but if the things, but if the city council has set aside the money for specific costs, it can go into next year to actually get it the things installed and the money spent. It just needs to, the council just needs to have taken an action to dedicate the money to that. They realize that some of the things that are happening, for example, we don't have our cameras tonight. Some things have been delayed in shipping and getting parts in for, so all cities are facing some of those kinds of things. So that is why they have said it doesn't have to be actually spent and the money paid to the vendor by November 30th, but the council will need to have decided that that's something they're going to do and set money aside by November 30th. This is the current day. The CARES Act itself says December 31st. The state, because this is the money that was given to the state and then allocated to cities, that they've sent the November 30th and then after November 30th, any money that isn't spent, they will allocate it either to other cities or to state expenditures of the CARES Fund.
Okay, one more question. We did receive an email about potentially being able to use CARES Act funding for a website redesign. So when we had originally sent out an RFP for a website redesign, we got several bids back, the highest being around 50,000. Is that correct, Haley?
Yeah.
So we were making some modifications.
Sorry.
What was that?
25.
25.
For the, for the bid?
For the bid.
Yeah, 25.
So, so if this is CARES Fund eligible and that is something that we are pursuing, that may be something else that we could allocate in this CARES Fund. So I want to make the rest of the council aware of that because I don't know if they all received that email or if it was just to the public.
I think it was just us.
PR, thank you, Public Relations Committee. So one more question, as far as these touchless fixtures, do we know what we have for city hall specifically? I know I mentioned this to you, but I'd love to see the bathrooms get some updated touchless fixtures. Is that included in that?
That's the city, city hall, the FAC, the fire department. We're all looking at that. We're looking at the touchless, three, three different sites, I believe, for drinking fountains in the parks that are touchless. And the part of that is to be able to refill bottles where right now we are the type of drinking fountains we have right now, you can just get a drink, but then the ones we're looking at, you can refill water bottles. And so those are the things. So we are looking at all, all the buildings, also some looking at that over at the shop also. So those are all all employees will be affected as well as the public.
Okay, and the, any of the toilets being upgraded?
The only ones that we were physically changing the entire toilet out might be here at city hall because we've had a request for that.
Well, I want them to be nice.
But I would also extend that.
The other ones are, it's just adding if, or the ones in other places are all commercial type toilets and and are plumbed for such and we would just need to add the, the sensor component to those toilets to upgrade those.
Would that be the case with like the Central Park restrooms behind the fire department?
Yes, and inside the fire department and also all the parks are that way. They just need have the valve changed on the top of it to have a sense, the sensor component put in and installed on those. And the FAC is the same way. They do not, those are a more commercial grade toilet than what we have here at city hall, which is standard.
Are we going to all battery operated?
Uh, yes, because
They're less maintenance.
Uh, less maintenance and because some of the ones that if we were to wire them up, we'd
Expensive.
It's very expensive. We'd have to tear out walls and and rewire and so forth. So yes, they were looking at the battery operated type. Simply because of the, not only the installation cost, but the maintenance cost afterwards.
So all of those things we discussed is included in the 50,000. We don't anticipate going higher than that?
We haven't got the, when the committee met and we discussed those, we're sending out requests for proposals and so it may go higher. Also in the totals, just to muddy the water just a little bit, we're looking at 360 to cover the, the fire department payroll. Most cities or most agencies are looking to fund the full payroll with CARES Act money. The state said, no, we don't agree with doing 100% and you need to come up with a percentage. We've also heard feedback that the treasury department is, has talked to the state and the state will be rescinding that clarification and changing and going with what everyone believes the treasury department originally said. So what that means is we're showing 360, it may drop to 260, depending on what the state's final decision is, and that would clear up an additional $100,000. This is, this is money that's already in the budget. We're going to spend anyway. And so every, every dollar that we can use of CARES money actually frees up that money for other purposes within the city from our budget. And so that's why we'd like to use as much as possible here as well as meet all the needs of the city for one-time expenditures.
Thank you so much, Mac.
So Mike, just another clarification question. We've only received two of the three allotments tranches, right? So if we don't get the third tranche, what do we cut out?
I would reduce the amount that we do reimbursement on the payroll. The 360 that we're, we're going to put into the general fund, that's what would be reduced unless the council votes to. The other things that we've decided to do, we've already placed orders and are working on. So the one thing that I show is the proposed allocation for the fire department payroll. If we didn't get the second tranche and we do allocate the full amount of money, the difference would be is instead of 360, we'd only be using 140 per payroll.
And so the hazard pay that's proposed would come out of that 91,000 that's not currently in there. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I, I have just a couple. I couldn't see the numbers. Do you mind just, so I see that the viral payroll from page 18 that was in our minutes. That went from 380 to 360.
That was, that's because I recalculated it.
Do you, do you mind just going down each of those amounts so we can kind of see?
Sure. Okay. Actual expenditures to date, 8,846. Allocation for city hall audio video upgrade, 40,000. Allocation for utility customer assistance, 30,000. Allocation for touchless fixtures, 50,000. Allocation for two fire department gurneys and their installation, 73,000. Allocation for chest compression system, 14,000. Proposed allocation for fire payroll, 360,000 for a total of 575,846. With all of the, if we get all three tranches as expected, that's 667, 779, leaving us with 91,933.
Okay.
When is the date of the third allotment? Do we, do we have an anticipated date?
I would anticipate, hopefully by the end of this month. When I've reviewed the things from the Utah League of Cities and Towns who are negotiating with the state. They're actively working. They realize they need to get the money out so people know specifically. One of the things that they're looking at is what are the requirements going to be? All we had to do for the first two tranches was to ask for it. They're considering right now what they, one of the things they may have us do is just they may require cities to give a detailed listing of what they spent to date and what they're planning to spend before they release the money. They don't want to have a lot of it coming back. And then look at what they're going to do after the fact. So during the month of December, they'd like it to be used by the cities, but they don't want to, they don't want to, some cities may need more, some cities may that's where they are for the third. And I anticipate we will have to say, do we respond with telling the state? Yes, we want the full amount of the tranche. Do we have a need for more money than the $220,000 or do we have? Or we don't need it? And so that's kind of where we are as our current status with the CARES Act. There is talk, of course, that we've heard that there may be additional money released by the federal government. That looks like that's going to be after the election right now. But we'll just have to see whether additional money comes to the state and whether or not that means additional money will come to us in the future. But don't count on that. We're not planning on that as of now. Just waiting for the money that we do know and especially once it's in the bank, then we do know it, that we do have it and can't spend it.
All right. I just have a question about the hazard pay. You know, we have it from March 1st through November 30th, but looking past November 30th, do we have a plan in place for that to continue or has that been discussed?
The chief is here. If you have questions for him, this was discussed in the committee. And the presentation that was given to the committee was just during the same that we've talked about from March 1st through, through payroll, through payrolls that will be included by November 30th. Right now, there's been no talk of extending it past that because we can fairly well calculate that and that's where our money is supposed to come. Yes, COVID will probably, will definitely exist past November 30th. But this is the money that we have and this is where we're, the way we're planning. This is a proposal, I should say. The council can change that. The committee recommendation is to, it's up to the council to decide whether they want to do hazard pay and at what level. And also, some cities are looking at a tiered approach and giving other employees outside of the public safety. We can research that. There's actually a a poll being taken. The cities currently haven't got all the results of what every city is doing across the state. And some are looking at other employees who are now facing a similar hazard, I might say, such in Salt Lake City, those who drive the buses, tracks, so forth, have an exposure where that wasn't considered a hazardous before. So that's something if we want to go back and look at that, and that's the council's direction. We can discuss that in the committee.
So I have one, I think it's kind of a follow-up to council, who are you?
Call me Haley.
Haley, to Haley's comment, does this commit the city to continue to do hazard pay after November 30th?
No, no, that's, that's why this is not showing as a commitment. This was a concern of the committee and if the committee wants to jump in and address that they
Which committee was this?
Uh, this was the finance committee.
Oh, finance.
Because it affects more things. This wasn't public safety, but this was the finance. Because we've, but that was brought up and was a concern that if we just added that every payroll, they got an extra two. It might be looked at something that should be an ongoing thing. And so that was the committee's recommendation to do it in two payments, kind of like as a bonus or a stipend, that we go through November 30th, do two payments, special type thing and not do it as an ongoing thing on their salary.
So Mayor, can we have Chief Toman come up and address some of those questions as far as expected pay beyond hazard pay now?
Yeah, so currently they're working obviously on a vaccine. The plan is when the vaccine comes out, people working in hospitals and frontline first responders are going to be first in line for that. And the discussions happening now are there's some legality questions of can fire departments force their personnel to get them? That's one question. But as far as how that, that statement relates to what we're talking about, once the vaccines offered to first responders, whether you choose to take it or not, it, the assumption is that, that the hazard would no longer be, be present. And so for it being some kind of long-term commitment, it's not the case. I think most, I think all firefighters are aware that this is all correlated to the CARES Act money. Those that choose not to get the vaccine because whatever their reasons are, would no longer be entitled to title pay anyways, because they have now made the choice to take on that risk, even though there's a vaccine available. And so I mean, the, the crystal ball as far as when we're going to have a viable vaccine is anybody's guess. And I think this is, the reason a lot of departments started doing this is it's that, that kind of stopgap once that hazard pay was approved. At first, when we first talked about it, as city staff were like, you know, we have other things like the gurneys and stuff we're going to do. And that's how we're going to support our employees. And then that became kind of a wave of all the fire departments. Not all, but a, a big chunk of fire departments. And it's slowly growing and growing and growing. And so I just brought it back up to Dave as this is something that's happening. I at least want to have the conversation. That way I can go back to my guys who are receiving hazard pay at their other jobs. Then say, I took it to the council and, and we have the discussion. So that's kind of how it came to be.
I just think it's important too, that when you do have that discussion with them, that it's pointed out that it is linked to CARES money.
Oh, for sure.
So that it is not, you're already in a hazardous job as it is, but it is a different circumstance, obviously.
Oh, definitely. And even, even after we had decided as staff not to initially, I just told the guys, look, look at the other stuff we've spent CARES Act on to support you guys. So don't feel like we're still doing things to support you as firefighters. And honestly, with that response, I haven't, no one else has complained beyond. And really the complaints weren't complaint. Hey, I just got this at my full-time job. Is that something that's going to happen here? It was more inquiries than complaints. No one's been upset or anything. So I don't want it to make it sound like my guys have been complaining to me. It was more inquiries.
So Mayor, let me just add something from the committee discussion and I'll invite Wayne to fill in the, the gaps or corrections, but you know, our firefighters, every single call could be potentially a COVID thing. And so there is some added hazard. You know, some people argue, well, their job's hazardous to begin with, but yes. And the discussion about other people, yeah, there are other people out there that have potential hazards in their day and that's a separate issue. You know, we probably need to look at that. But this is something that has been approved and is being utilized by other fire departments throughout the state. And so we felt, you know, they do understand it's limited. They do understand it's only for a short time from the care standpoint, but if we do give the hazard pay extra, it would be, you know, a benefit for them because they are going out every single call potentially into harm, extra harms way than they have in the past. And so you know, we, we felt that it would be appropriate for us to do some hazard pay and I don't, Wayne, what else would you add on that?
Thanks. Just as a clarification, the, the committee did not choose to take on this. This is, this issue was brought to this committee and we even asked it to come to the safety committee and they dubbed me as wearing two hats. So sorry, Blair, that's why it didn't come to you.
It worked perfect.
But with that regard, the issue is brought up. Yeah, we did discuss, well, if one person gets it, now everybody else is going to want to get it. And that's a, that was another discussion we wanted to have with the council. But what's before us today is our first responders who are initial responders, who are at risk for those exposures. And we felt it prudent. We didn't agree with some of the other cities' amounts. Some cities are giving up to four, five, $7. We thought $2 was reasonable. We did not want to put it as part of their base pay because this was part of, linked to CARES. And that's why we said this is a lump sum payment for those time periods based upon hours served, not just being a member of the fire department. So there's an accounting that goes on with the actual hours on not just being a member of the fire department. So there's an accounting that goes on with the actual hours on the books for their time here. And uh, it's a simple calculation rather than, was that time spent on the call or was that time spent in the, in the service station? Was it related? We said just for simplicity purposes, if they're on the book, if they're on the clock for an hour, they get, they get the $2 for that time period. Uh, so it's going to be different for each person, but you don't know how much time they spent there. And it was up to the November 30th, and it was directly linked to CARES. And it was a one, well, it's a two-time deal, but it's just for this particular event.
And if I may, I wasn't involved in the committee meeting, um, because it was the finance committee. But I, just for my two cents, I think that's the right approach. I know some of the departments that did just a lump sum across the board bonus to all their, not bonus, uh, a chunk of change to all their employees. Like Salt Lake City, for example, there was a lot of heartburn because there's been guys that have been on short-term disability whole duration of COVID, and they got the same check as guys that have been working in, in. And I think that's a, a fair approach that the committee decided to take.
Thank you, Wayne.
Do they ba- base their amounts on? That just sort of, oh, well, let's, let's give them this.
No, honestly, I, it kind of snowballed. There were, there was one department that I know of that offered $6, another one that offered two. And, and like council member Windsor said, you know, six, and, and those numbers seem really high for a lot of cities. Most departments have fallen between that two to four range. And like in Weaver County, most of the departments almost across the border doing 250. In, in Davis County, it's anywhere from two to six. And how they came up with that number, I honestly don't have a good answer for it. We, we kind of just, we just kind of sat back, like I said, and kind of just started watching this process take place of. And, and honestly, that, that's helped form our opinion of, instead of us leading out the gate and coming up with some obscure number, just try to stay consistent. Kind of, when me and Dave talked about it, is this isn't a, we don't, we don't need that $6. We don't need the $2, but this is falling in line with what other fire departments are doing. So.
Just as a, as a commentary, uh, that was brought up in the committee, I'll echo it here. Uh, we recognize our first responders or fire department, it is a hazardous job. But we also recognize this is above and beyond what they're having to deal with. With regards to the allocations that we've already visited, thank you for asking us questions. The proposed, uh, fire payroll allocation, that's the one item we keep looking at as possible being cut. If we don't get the third tranche, and it is also the biggest chunk. I look at the hazards pay as a, uh, time served, here's the money and get it out and get it to them for what they have done. The second tranche would be, or the second aspect would be for the time period from September 29th to November 30th for what they've done. The payroll is hopeful that we get to that. Has a question mark on my eyes to, oh, you get the full amount. So I'm leaning towards, uh, recommending the $2 per hour served, uh, for the two time periods for a job well done.
Agreed.
Is everybody okay with that amount that's been recommended?
We need a motion?
Yeah. Yes. Do we have a motion?
Or Quinn?
Uh, I'll make a motion. Let me find the statement here. I'll make a motion that they do the coronavirus aid relief. Receive two lump sum payments from that, um, fund, from those funds in the equivalent of $2 per hour served.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? And we'll have a roll call vote beginning with councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Thank you, chief.
Yep. Thanks, chief.
And please, uh, give our regards to the fire department and our, it all you're doing. All right. Item number eight is coronavirus aid relief and economic security act CARES request by mosquito abate. And mosquito abatement district Davis or MAD is a local district. This district covers the entire county and have a representative on our board of trustees from each incorporated city within the county and the county at large. Our representative is council member Wayne Windsor. The MAD, like many cities and businesses, has experienced, experienced an increased cost in operations due to the COVID pandemic. Due to this increased cost, the board of trustees is requesting funds from each city's and the county's CARES Act funding. The mosquito abatement district is requesting $1,739 from each jurisdiction. Included in your packet was a breakdown of the direct cost to operations associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. This total cost has been divided by the 15 cities and the county to determine the amount requested from the CARES Act funding. Are there comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in on this, mayor.
You bet.
As the committee, uh, representing the mosquito abatement district for the city, I, I was not present at this meeting. Uh, I was digging out from snow, but I did get a debrief. It was not considered to be prorated, which was our public comment earlier. It was simply 1/16 of the total cost. This is for basically, uh, labor costs. Those hours are people who would have worked, had to go home because they were exposed or believed to have been exposed. And so it qualifies as CARES Act money. Uh, it's 1/16. And no, the unincorporated, uh, aspects of the county are very, very, very small. There's very limited square footage in this county that's unincorporated. It's actually, I don't have the exact numbers, so I can't compare it, but it's, it's not that much. 1/16 seemed to be a reasonable amount in which they went ahead. You could prorate it. It would be less for South Weaver City, obviously. But it, it was not a significant amount that I thought it was worth debating amongst the other 16.
Councilman Windsor.
Thank you.
Other, other comments?
Can I answer my questions?
Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the CARES Act?
Uh, before we make that motion, mayor, may I add something further? If this is, uh, to be recommended for approval, and if the council does approve it, I would strongly encourage the, the city and or the motion to request a contract with the mosquito abatement district for these funds. We'd need some sort of paper trail in case the treasury comes back and wants an accounting for where these monies are spent. Uh, I think we need to keep it simple. I don't think we need to have attorney signatures on it. But if we, that's what the other cities, most are doing, are requesting some sort of contract with the mosquito abatement district for these funds, at least acknowledging receipt. We can get more into the details of what that should be, but I think any motion should require a, a contract for these funds.
Make it.
Right.
So with that, I make that motion.
And can you state the amount in your?
Uh, $1,739.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further comment? Councilman Sotoquist, second, by the way. All right. Then we will have a roll call vote beginning with councilman Haversen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine, resolution 2020 dash 43 Harvest Park Development Agreement. Resolution 18 dash 39 approved a development agreement with Nelson, Nelson Homes for the Cook property. That subdivision was subsequently named Harvest Park. As a developer brought forth Harvest Park Phase Three for city council approval during their meeting on August 25th, 2020, the council pressed for an, an agreed upon completion date of Phase One Detention Basin that is intended for dual use as a dog park. The developers representative Mark Staples verbally agreed to sign an amended agreement requiring full completion by November 1st. The updated agreement was included in your packet. Are there comments or questions on this agreement?
So basically all the agreement that's being modified is paragraph 9.2, which basically qualifies that they need to have the park done by November, November 1st. But if circumstances arise, the city manager can extend that.
Right.
I make a motion that we approve the amended agreement.
I can.
Okay. Any further comment? We'll have a roll call vote beginning with councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number 10, our calendar, 2020 council meetings amended and 2021 council. Currently, the council meets three times each month. Typically, one of the three meetings tends to have a smaller agenda, which could be incorporated into the other. Additionally, staff would be able to get the packets out earlier, giving more time for review to council and the public. City code states that council will meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. On September 29th, council discussed changing back to the original schedule with a work session on the third Tuesday. The 2021 schedule would normally be approved in December, but it's provided now for convenience. The 2020 amended schedule will change October 20th meeting to a work session and cancel the November 24th meeting. Next year's schedule was included in your packet. Are there comments or questions on this?
I just have one comment that I'll. If we looking to have two very long meetings. My, my two cents.
Okay.
I want to meet four times.
I know. I, how, how long do we need to give notice to have a work meeting? It's the same as.
Or to change a work meeting to a council meeting.
24 hours. 24 hours. The only, the only difference would be if you have actions you're wanting to take that may have longer uh, notice approval, public hearing requirements. But if it's a routine meeting to do routine business, it would 24 hours.
24 hours. Okay. Other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the 2020 council meetings amended and the 2021 council court and planning commission schedule?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Um, let's have a roll call vote. Well, I, do we need a roll call vote? I know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I guess we don't need a roll call vote.
All right. Oh, let's see, we did item number 11, so we're to new business. Does anyone have any new business?
I do have some new business. Um, so we, uh, the mayor and I and Mark Larson, um, all met down at the posse grounds. Councilman Sotoquist was unable to attend, but we looked at the posse grounds and the damage from the windstorm, at the sod. Um, the trees pulled out the sprinkling system and there's, um, grass that's dying. So it was determined that instead of repairing the sprinkling system and putting new sod in, it would have value for us if we take out that section of sod and instead just turn it into, extend the parking lot in that area. Where we're going to have, uh, the higher use with the dog park, it, it makes sense to do that. So in speaking with Mark Larson, he feels that about $8,000 would be a pretty safe estimate for that, to say that that would cover everything. So what is the council's thoughts on that? Right now, I will, I'll preface that with, right now is a good time for them to get this work done because they're slowing down. So we could get on that pretty quickly.
I don't personally use it, but there are a lot of families who use that Bowery and, I mean, I, I don't know how often it gets actually rented through the city or scheduled by, through the city. It's.
I don't believe that's one that we rent. We, not all.
There's been a lot of family get-togethers during COVID there.
At the posse grounds?
At the, at the, on the grass area, there's been a lot down there.
So it's right by the fire pit?
Yeah, the grass, that's the only grass down there.
All the trees are gone now.
I understand. I'm just saying it's been used. I'm not, I'm not saying whether it's used. Way more than I see anywhere else being used for that kind of, uh, event. It's not in Canyon Meadows used like that. It's not, I mean, I just. Again, I don't know how that gets scheduled because I mean, they even use the facilities too. So, and not the posse grounds, it's just that grass area. And I've also seen scout troops camp there as well.
Would there be any grass area left or would it all be, I, I saw the map.
Yeah. Let me.
So you're kind of talking about where the bench is for Lisa, right?
Yeah. How much of it was taken out? Remember how my feet, he said?
Well, all the fence is gone.
I'll have that Lisa that we could pull up on the screen, do we? Okay.
If I can find it, I can email it. Does anybody have any other thoughts?
Yeah, are there other?
I was just thinking the value of the grass and that, that which is served for those who use it versus how many more parking stalls are we going to get? And I assume it's gravelled. You're not, you're not putting any kind of harsh skate down.
Lisa, I just sent that to you.
Yeah, it's, it would just be gravel.
Yeah.
Would this come out of the parks budget, Andy?
Probably the fire department.
I like that.
It would come out of the parks.
And you're, you're talking about the whole grass.
No, not the entire grass. There would still be grass left.
Well, that's what I asked and you said all of it.
But the fire pit would be gone.
The fire pit would be gone.
So it's a fire pit to the road or the fire pit back?
If you could direct your attention to the screen.
We can't see the screen over here.
If you want me to.
You can't move that screen either, can you?
Okay, so.
No screen.
Counsel is welcome to go and look.
It is a significant portion of the grass. But I will tell you.
About 60% of it?
Yeah.
It's about 60% of it's gone.
I have it on my tablet on Google Earth if anyone needs to.
Oh.
It doesn't get used for?
Better access for what we had need for the dog park.
So it would provide, um, yeah, better access for the dog park. This is just for the council direction, so I.
I don't know.
I just remember up in that cul-de-sac, how many cars were parked there in Long Deer Run Drive? I think.
It's pretty big, huh?
Would be nice to have more parking, but I don't want to take away picnic spot either.
Oh, yeah. That's my concern is diminishing the uses at the, at the posse grounds, wherever, who does use it, if it's horses, if it's for country fair days, whatever it is. In lieu of a dog park, yes, I think the dog park's going to have to have some occupancy restrictions to per, limit the parking. I, I get the ying and the yang, but I'd, I'd rather preserve what we have there than expand its uses to, for parking. So that's just my opinion.
The guest amount of 8,300 square feet. I, I, I agree with councilman Windsor. Yet again. Yeah.
Picnic spot.
I, I do. I think that if we have residents that utilize, um, the grass, to keep the grass, yes.
Go in.
I go either way. I, you know, there's obviously a cost to repair it. It'd be lower cost to turn in the parking lot, which might be needed, but if there are a lot of residents using it, then I can see that side of things as well.
Do, do you think it will be more cost to re, to put it into, to repair it than put it into road base?
Didn't we have?
Because they got to repair the, they got to repair the sprinkler system anyway, if you're keeping grass.
He was going to just cut it off and shut off the sprinkling system without the grass, if you did the parking lot, so he wouldn't have to repair all that sprinkly system. Was my understanding.
Yeah, that's my understanding. So I, I will assume that it will cost more to put the parking lot in than to repair it.
That's kind of what I thought.
It sounds like there's interest in restoring it. So. Find out what the, talk to Mark and see what the cost would be.
To restore it.
I mean, if there's other, I mean, if we had other plans to do something going farther into where the trees are that came down and towards the trail to replace that, I would be okay with it. But I think if you're not, we, I think I'd prefer to see it stay.
Okay.
They can always eat in the dog park.
I agree.
I'm just kidding. They, they can always park on that really big. Yeah.
Okay, I, that, thank you very much. Well, I'm good with keeping it grass, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Other new business?
Do we need to give staff the assignment to look at other, um, potential hazard pay for employees? Or Matt, have they already discussed that?
Uh, David and I have discussed briefly, uh, the study that's being done, her poll is being done. But, uh, his recommendation is the council wants us to do that, we will do some work on, we will research that further and take that back to the finance committee, uh, which is where we're taking the different, most, the general things like that for the CARES Act money. And it'll be discussed in that committee and, uh, and something if that's, if the council. And it'll be discussed in that committee and, uh, and something if that's, if the council request would desire us to do that. Uh, we will, so. Uh, that's, I'm just asking, the council wants us to research other ones, other op, other possibilities in the city. We have been closed here at City Hall, so through most of this time, so that's not, but you do. The FAC employees have been open and meeting and dealing with the public at the front desk, so we do have people there. Uh, Public Works has limited interaction with the public, FAC would probably be second. And I would say City Hall, but it is something that, uh, David and I will look at and take to the committee if that's your direction.
I would feel like that would be appropriate.
Just take a look at it and come back with a recommendation if you feel like there should be some or should not.
Okay.
I hear two.
What? Oh, yes.
Okay, Wayne.
We'll take it on.
I'm okay with it being researched. I'm, I struggle with how far to take that.
Yeah, right.
The whole world's going through it right now.
Yep.
Just to clarify or piggyback on closing City Hall, putting Quinn on the spot maybe a little bit, did you guys decide about opening City Hall's door?
We did not.
Uh, we've had a brief discussion with staff and with David. And, uh, we haven't had, um, requests for people wanting to come to City Hall. Occasionally, we have some people wanting to come, and if they need to do something, we do it by appointment and open up. We did have one interesting case where a fellow was very upset because, uh, he couldn't come and deliver. An applicant, utility application. And, uh, then he called back and he said, uh, I'm sorry, I was so. Uh, gruff with you on the phone, but I was just diagnosed with covid. So we're rather glad that he, we didn't open the doors and, and weren't public, because he intended to, uh. To come to City Hall after being diagnosed.
Most of your permits and stuff have still been able to be dropped off, correct?
Yeah, well, we're, we're, business is as usual.
I have had some complaints from just people in the city who don't know what the hours are and then they're confused what. Had a few people reach out to me on that end that aren't making appointments, but rather just need to drop in real quick for something or another, but.
Okay, yeah, yeah. What we've, and maybe we can send out a media, some more on media that. Now make a note to send that out on a media blast that if you have to, if you do need to come to City Hall, please call City Hall and make an appointment. And so we have been meeting with people, but it's been by appointment only.
Yeah, we did touch upon it briefly in our committee meeting, but we didn't see an urgent need. And we didn't discuss further than that.
Can I make one quick other new business? Can we put on the marquee, uh, that the secondary water will be shut off on Thursday?
Some of it's already shut off, yeah.
If it's not already shut off.
Yeah.
It has?
Yeah.
There's three or four different.
Still going.
Oh, I know, I'm fully aware of that, I just, uh, just.
One of them got shut off already, at least.
Okay. Then they're out of water.
Alright, any other new business?
I just have one item for, I guess, the municipal utilities committee.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Look at Quinn, it's Quinn's. Um, oh, it's mine, I guess, that's right.
I, I would love to not see the fiber discussion die, because I've had a lot more people. Especially since people working from home and we have multiple family member.
What if the municipal's utilities committee would like to see it die?
Well, I'm asking not to.
Okay, just checking.
I just would love to revisit that again and see if that's something we can pursue. Because I have had several people say, we, you know, we have four or five people at our house and we're all drawing from the internet. Is there something we can do about getting fiber, so?
We'll take it back up. I've actually had some additional information that's come across my desk or my phone, if you will, uh, different technologies that we'd even thought of. Uh, some concerns about five G and some of the ill effects it has on some people in our community, health effects. Uh, so I think we need to take that back up again in our next committee meeting and start wrestling with options and, you know, next steps, so. We will not let it get gathered dust or cobwebs.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Oh, I got a sir.
I do have one other thing, Mayor. Um, we had a discussion. Previously about the safety. Down around the Old Maple Farms and six, sixty-six fifty road, and I just hate to see it drop. And I don't know what's been discussed in the past, what options are available, I've heard. You know, obviously, all of them have some negative impact on somebody, but from a s- city standpoint, is there something we can do? From road direction barriers or, or designing roads to slow down or prevent. A lot of fast traffic going through some of those residential areas.
Well, cottonwood drivers is a clear example of how you can slow down traffic, just let the road go to pot. But I don't think we want to do that.
Are you talking about, uh, those?
Yes, specifically that.
I do know that, uh, the Davis County Sheriff's Office was asked to do special enforcement. This last weekend, uh, spent during the soccer hours and so forth. Uh, when we had our meeting today with them, uh. Officer did not have specifics, hadn't seen those reports of what happened over this last weekend. But that's one of the things that was done, David had requested that they do. Down in that area, additional enforcement, uh, during the soccer times over this last weekend. I'm sorry, I do not have anything to report directly of what those result was, but I do know that they did. Put extra patrols and have people there this last weekend, and once we get that information, we'll pass that on to the council. There, there are other options, but.
I think the CUP requires the directional signage and stuff by the complex, but one of the things that, when you read the stats. I know when we put our, what we, our speed limit sign out there, whatever, our electronic trailer out. When you read the stats online about what those electronic signs do, it drastically decreases when there's something flashing your speed. Telling you you're speeding. I don't know how well if people on the one on nine, is it nine? That, that, when that was added, I know there were a lot of people pleased when that was added. That could be something that the city takes on to add. I don't know what the cost of those are. I know there's been requests for those in two or three locations over there. And that would be one that I would think would be a good spot for it.
Is that CARES Act eligible? It's low the spread.
I think we could make that case.
Uh, you, you can make that case to the state when they come about it.
But, but, it could be eligible for that stuff, money that goes back to the general fund, though.
Could you check that out, Mark?
And I do know we've had a request to, that there's citizens willing to donate one of those. Not in the Old Maple Farms and then, but we needed to know what. Well, what the cost and what sign the city would prefer now that they have one.
And Old Maple Farms are on sixty-six fifty.
A group came on four seventy-five and said they were willing to put one on four seventy-five.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else? That's a lot of new business. Alright, uh, so we'll go to reports. There is a pickleball clinic on Saturday and you can still sign up on the city website, so. Gonna be lots of fun and I think I'm gonna get Krispy Kremes. That might be extra incentive. So.
Exercise and eat donuts.
That's right. That's what I do. We have power at the posse grounds now and the sprinkler and fence is going in. I also saw sod going down today, so. That is exciting, so. Um, we also plan to have the updated general plan on the agenda for adoption by the city council. Be coming up. Um, and that's all I have to report. Uh, let's start with Councilman Windsor.
Oh, I get to go first?
You do.
Oh, wow, what an honor. Alright, uh, I, oh, we have a lot to report, the mosquito abatement, uh, uh, meeting we had last Thursday. Uh, I have this written down, if you try to catch it all, I couldn't write it all down, so I haven't sent it to me. Here's some statistics for the month of September, West Nile virus has been found in the state. There have been two human cases, both of those are in Davis County. Uh, there was forty-two positive mosquito pools, eleven of those were in Davis County. Uh, just for comparison, from the CDC reports, California had thirty counties with West Nile virus. Ninety-three human cases and two deaths. Um, they actually had some fourteen horses and, uh, some birds that also died. Arizona had seven human cases, no deaths, ninety-four positive mosquito pools. Colorado had twenty-nine human cases, uh, sixty-six positive mosquito pools. Idaho had seven counties with twenty-two positive tests for mosquito pools, uh, five human cases. Two horses have died. Wyoming had no human cases, uh, no positive mosquito pools, and New Mexico had three human cases in three counties. Um, the big thing they're going on, they're saying calls into the office that allow them in the September, there was four hundred. Two hundred ninety-six were submitted online. I know one from South Weber, uh, and the reason why, uh. Well, well, they had twenty-nine of these were special requests, which is way above average for September. Uh, of those four hundred and twenty-four, three hundred of the calls came on the last three days of the month. And that was the re, result of the flooding for the duck hunt, the little rain that they've had, and with the ten plus degrees. Uh, above normal, the dorsalis moved off the marsh and into the subdivisions, and the dorsalis like to bite all day. And that's why they were, we were getting calls. Uh, they have sprayed four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven miles. Uh, by the bikes in the month of September. They, uh, sprayed or, uh, treated one hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven catch basins. And they made it through the county four times in the month of September. So they're doing their job, it's just this, uh, September gave them some extra, some extra heat, not enough law, not enough water. And, uh, I bet the wind didn't help every, either, so, uh, we appreciate people's patience, they are working, uh, it's been a tough month. Uh, but that's my report.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Windsor. Well, there's one good thing about wind.
Can I ask a question? Why didn't Wyoming have any? It's so windy. But it's windy here.
Well, you have to have humans in Wyoming to have human cases. I just, why, I don't know. I have no, I have nothing. I have nothing.
Next, next meeting, ask for questions.
Next meeting, please be prepared with that.
I, I ask for your forgiveness, I'll come prepared. Oh, yes, they were.
They were bad.
And, uh, yeah.
Alright.
But it does work, and then the people who reached out to me, I instructed them how to, uh, call and or there's an online, you go to their website, you can actually submit a request. Online, and they typically get to those within forty-eight hours of the recall.
Or the next day, they come to my house like the next day.
Yeah, they, they try to get right on those ones, so, um, it works, it knocks them down, but unfortunately, you gotta suffer through it while they're hatched.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Petty.
Uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee met a couple weeks ago and we've, um, submitted several intent to apply. Is that the term for it, for the, um. The grants? Is that what it's called, intent to apply? Basically, there's a process, letter of intent, thank you, so we, we, um. Selected several different items that could be grant eligible, and we said we'd like to apply for these. A good idea if we're eligible or not, so it's kind of the first pre-step to actually applying. Um, and then we discussed our master plan for Canyon Meadows Park, and so we will have that to present to. Uh, the rest of the council to weigh in and formally adopt that, and that should be on the twenty-seventh. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilman Sotekos.
Uh, just a couple of things the admin finance committee discussed, we already touched on. Um, the fire department cares money and some of the touchless feature, features things. One of the items we talked about a few months ago was the ethics and conflicts form that came up during our recent audit. That, uh, city staff and, um, personnel. Are asked whether or not they do that yearly. The decision was made to put those in our policies and procedure manual. So it's part of an annual update, and then there'd be an acknowledgement page for all employees to sign. Uh, that manual, I think, was last updated in twenty fifteen, so it needs an update anyway. Um, so the proposal was for staff to review and identify any other changes that need to be made. And then that would all come before the city council, um, sometime next year prior to our June audit. Um, and that way it would be a, oh, go ahead, Wayne.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add to that, one of the things we talked administratively was, was to, as part of the budget approval process, the policy. Manual is also to be looked at annually. Uh, it was suggested that after the March legislation session, that. Staff and council would look at any of the legislation that passed to see how and what would affect our policy and procedures. Uh, make those update recommendations and be, it would be a, an agenda item after the budget that the policy procedures would also be adopted. In which case, once adopted, staff would then be given an update to the policy procedures and acknowledge receipt of that, which goes to the annual renewal of the ethics. Uh, standard, because it's part of the policy procedures, and that was the logic behind that.
Yep, waiting for next year rather than do it now and then just have to redo it potentially next year. Thank you, Wayne, for adding that. Um, the other comment I would just add from our meeting, um, we did talk a little bit about vacation policy for. The exempt, um, and new employees within the city, and so the staff is going to come back with some. Um, suggestions based off of some of the discussion we had there, so that one will be a future item. Anything else, Wayne, that you remember from that?
No, I think that's a good report, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Edwards.
Uh, I don't have anything too much except for we have a new audio visual system.
We have visual.
You mean audio.
Well, we just have audio, but visuals.
I was just qualifying that.
Um, be careful with their mics, I think they pick up, um, online even better than they do here. Uh, just a warning for you. Uh, I think, Mac, we kind of talked about lowering the screen, I just wanted to get your guys' thoughts. This meeting, but is that something that you guys would like to see? Is these be lowered down or, um?
Embedded into the table?
I hope that one day when we can get rid of these things, we can just share.
You just feel like you're not seeing anything?
Yeah, I, I just feel kind of, we can't, we can't.
There, uh, with that, and with Blair's comment, yes, that we can attach a different stand. To the back where the bottom of the screen basically rests on the table, so that's how much lower they would be. And they can, and they can tilt all the way back so that if you want it flat, like a tabletop to look at. And take up your entire space, uh.
I still think we need to get Angie a, a chair that raises a little higher.
And, um, I was, I thought of bringing some cushions tonight, but I apologize, Angie, I didn't bring any. Uh, yes. I could, I just thought of a nice cushion.
Maybe Blair can just build you a platform to put your chair on.
A booster seat.
But, uh, you know, I, I did order those today, so. So that we can't, because that gives you more flexibility. The cameras be, by the next meeting, uh, they're fairly certain that they will be in. Um, you commented on the audio, I'll just say that there's been comments online tonight saying. First one, uh, basically says we can hear everybody. And so the, in the chat, uh, on YouTube. No, I think they said it was a positive thing that. That there's there.
Yeah, they can, they can hear ours.
Uh, with that, if you're going to do a sidebar and the cut, the, you will be caught on camera, but if you push the button. And the little light goes off temporarily, you can't. Or cough or sneeze or whatever, and you will not be recorded, and it won't go out. And, but what you should be seeing, what we see up there, and what you will see on your screens is the same thing that they're seeing on YouTube. And, uh, so it's still a work in progress. Again, I apologize that for the technical difficulties tonight. Uh, that work in, on the live run.
And I would just add to that, that Lisa has now full control, so she can mute all of our mics or unmute all of our mics or. Turn off our screens, she can do, she has all power. or turn off our screens. She can do, she has all power.
She mute that mic?
Yeah.
Yes.
She can, she can, oh, and she can raise and lower our individual mics. Wayne, you were instructed to have your mic turned up all the way before. So it's, it's pretty cool. And you don't have to get nearly as close.
Is there a mic on the podium or is that?
There is, and it works.
There, and if you notice, there's new speakers in here that are spaced around. Instead of one speaker, we have multiple speakers. We have new speakers up in the front office and in the over, and in the conference room for overflow. Several new features we'll update you to as we get everything up and running, so.
We do have additional mics, so if we have the planning commission join us, they're able to have their own mics and everything, so. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilman Halverson.
The only thing I had to report on is Planning Commission. They had Planning Commission meeting on the eighth. There was a public hearing and action on the general plan. It was a quick public hearing with no comment and approved with one, with one minor change. As you received our packets, when we received that, it is on the parcel over, that is owned by Dan Murray over above the car wash to all R seven. So you guys can mull that over. I, I believe that was the only change. There was also a public hearing in action on a preliminary plat and on South Weaver Drive, and also a preliminary site and improvement plan on that same parcel, which would be the, they sectioned off another parcel next to where the coffee shop was presented, next to Little Caesar's, and it is a hair salon, twelve studio. I think they were very thorough on it, and it was approved and recommended for approval, recommended for approval. So.
All right.
That is it.
Thank you. Mac, did you have anything?
Just as you're aware, David is still recovering. He is basically on sick leave. He is available for emergencies and special requests, but he's not actively working from home.
I meant to ask about that. So we have a planet, a Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Dave sets those up and we do those, or do we know if we're still doing that?
Most of the meetings we are still doing. David has tried, has been doing the meetings from home. But we did cancel one meeting today, and so it's very limited, but we can't, we can still hold the meetings. And he hasn't, to my knowledge, no meetings have been canceled.
Okay. You still have that on your schedule, Wayne? I noticed it on my calendar this, I noticed it on the calendar this morning when I.
I got a text, Wayne, before the meeting.
Absolutely. I think we have one next week.
Okay. I'll, maybe I'll send David a text. Sorry.
No, that's fine. If, you know, we're still holding the meetings, but we're not, we don't want to hold a meeting just to hold a meeting. So if there's business that needs to be discussed.
We've just been holding those every other week during COVID, so that's why.
Okay, and that's, but that's pretty much it. So that, you know, if you do need to contact him, he's, he will, he will answer. But the easiest way to get in touch with him, preferably, is just to text him. And if he's feeling up to it, he will get back with you, but he still is very miserable. He had hoped to be on vacation this week, and it didn't work out. The medicines didn't help out. A plug from David and a plug from some of the other employees, that if you're in the category that you should get the shingles vaccine, don't wait. It is something that works, but, and he never, he figured he wasn't an old man yet, and so.
What is the age, do you know, when you're eligible?
Fifty is when they suggest you start getting.
Yeah, suggested fifty. Yeah. If you've had chick, if you've had chicken pox, it stays in your body. And one of the, one of the triggers is stress and, but you have, it stays in your body and it settles in different parts of the body, and when it turns into shingles, you do not know where it will, where, where it will appear. And so, and it is very painful. So we wish David the best, a speedy recovery. It's not as speedy as he would have liked, and he, he can't sit, he can't stand, he can't walk, and he can't lie down. So it's, he's kind of.
Is he floating?
I, I don't know how he's doing that, you know. But that's, that's what he has claimed is that he has problems doing all of those things, so. But that's where we are with that. And I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, did you have anything to add?
No, nothing for me. Nice to be with you all.
Thanks for coming. Lisa.
I would just like to say that the ballots are going out, so if you haven't received it, it should be in the next couple of days.
Got them today.
Install a drop box at the FAC. There will not be one at City Hall. There will only be the one at the FAC. You can drive up, drop it in. And there will also only be one location on Election Day, so they would like everyone to take care of it before.
And that's not in South Weber, correct? It's not a location here?
The location will be in Farmington.
Yeah.
It'll be busy.
It will. Yes, they ask that you only use it for extenuating circumstances, like you've lost your ballot or, I don't know, something where you can't, just can't mail it in. All right, Lisa, Michelle.
Nothing for me.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We, we are adjourned.